In session. So clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Shrubnik. Deputy Mayor Herbig.
Here.
Councilmember Danuski.
Here.
Mayor Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Marshall.
Present.
Councilmember Curtis.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Um, all right, we're gonna try something different tonight. Mr. Lowe. Would you please lead us in the flag salute?
I'll be to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its defense.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right, next item is a consent agenda. If there are no changes to the agenda, the agenda will stand approved as written. All right, next item is citizen comments. This is an opportunity for express your views on issues that are important to you and to the community, and we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes.
Mayor, there's nobody signed up.
Anybody wishing to speak about issues that are important? Anybody wishing to speak? Seeing none, I declare the citizen comment portion closed. Next item on the agenda is a consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
And I'll second moved, and seconded is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda stands approved unanimously. Our next item on the agenda is a public hearing, consideration of ordinance number 180458 to include the relocation and removal of utilities in the right-of-way. Ms. Ausley and Mr. Vinz- uh, Vinz- uh, Vincenti.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. John Vincenti is going to do a quick briefing on this, this ordinance. This is something that will be related to the next agenda item as well, which is the PSE franchise agreement. This ordinance have, gives us the ability to enforce some of the provisions that are in the franchise agreement.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. Nancy pretty much summed up what the ordinance does. It adds some clarification. It's, it's amending chapter 12 of the, of the code that talks about utility, right-of-way and whatnot. And this particular section, we're adding in some clarification to relocation for utilities, and then we're also adding in there some ability to enforce the relocation of said utilities. So that's about the sum of it.
Questions? Yes.
So which, all utilities would be included?
Correct.
I mean, go ahead and list them off for me.
So within the proposed ordinance, there's a definition of utilities. So if you go to your packet specifically at 05.030 subsection K, that's a, the utilities is, was intended to include all, everything you could think of, and it is a new definition for you.
Thank you. Um, so I'm not clear on undergrounding and moving. We pay for undergrounding. We pay a portion to have utilities undergrounded.
Correct.
And that's only with PSE. Is that the same thing with, let's say Comcast or anybody else running on poles? Or they're required to?
So it depends on the franchise agreement. There are a couple, I believe, that do require undergrounding utilities, but the majority of them don't really speak of undergrounding utilities, so it becomes an individual agreement per project.
Okay. But if we ask PSE to move a pole, they move it at their cost, right?
Uh, in most cases, yes. It depends on whether or not that pole was recently relocated. If it was recently relocated, I don't recall, five years, then we would, the city would have to pay for that. But if it was relocated after that, then they would cover the cost.
But if we ask them to underground?
Then there's a proportional share.
Yeah. So, okay, fine. Not fine, but I guess it's gonna have to be. All right. Any other questions? So I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anybody wishing to be heard?
There's nobody signed up, Mayor.
So the public hearing I'm declaring open is to do with relocation, removal of utilities in the right-of-way. Anybody wishing to be heard? Anybody wishing to be heard on ordinance number 18 dash 0458? That includes a relocation, removal of utilities in the right-of-way. Seeing nobody coming forward, I declare the public hearing closed. All right, next item on the agenda, ordinance number 180458 to include the relocation, removal of utilities in the right-of-way. We've had it presented to us, and we have asked questions, so I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve 18 dash 0458 to unlo- include the relocation and removal of utilities in the right-of-way. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Is there discussion? Questions? Hearing none. The motion before us then is to approve ordinance number 18 dash 0458 to include relocation, removal of utilities in the right-of-way. Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
Yes.
All right, motion passed unanimously. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number 18 dash 0456, approving a non-exclusive dual franchise agreement with Puget Sound Energy, Inc., and contract, contract number 18 dash C1820, memorandum of understanding with Puget Sound Energy on performance and reli- reliability reporting. Ms. Ausley?
Do I sound different sitting over here?
Yeah, you seem to be coming in more of this here.
Oh, yeah. There you go. We're gonna actually begin with a short presentation from Puget Sound Energy on some of their recent projects in, in Kenmore. And so, yeah, I'm sorry, I should've let you know that Kelly.
Good evening, Mayor Baker, Deputy Mayor Herbig, council members. I'm Julian Low, Local Government Affairs and Public Policy Manager with Puget Sound Energy. We're pleased to be here tonight and wanna thank you all for placing this franchise renewal onto tonight's agenda. First, I want to acknowledge the hard work and thank Rob Kerlinsky, Nancy Ausley, City Attorney Ray Ton, from, for all the hard work they've put in to get us to this point. And so, tonight, we're gonna begin again with a quick recap of the reliability improvements that we've made over the last couple of years and the ones we have planned for 2018. And then, finally, we're gonna touch about, touch on ways customers can interact with Puget Sound Energy to prepare for storms and outages. So things like downloading the My PSE app to your phones, and then also following us on social media for updates. So with that, I'd like to now introduce Raylan Asaw, who is Supervisor of Municipal Relations for Puget Sound Energy.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. So as Nancy and Julian have talked about, we've done quite a bit of work in Kenmore in the past couple of years, and we have more work planned for this coming year that was slated, and then the franchise is, I guess, a part of that. So to quickly review what we did in 2016, many of you have seen me here before talking about what we, what we were planning on doing and what we, what we did. We, the biggest improvement we did to Kenmore, kind of the, that serves all of Kenmore, is we rebuilt the transmission line, Morelands Batouli, that serves Kenmore. It's number six on the map that you see up there. So that was rebuilt in the summer of 2016. We did a little bit of work on it in 2017 as well, some poles in the, in the wetland and creek and Wallace Swamp Creek Park were replaced this year. We also installed some switches and reclosers around the community to help restore power more quickly when the power does go out. And then we put a test distribution automation project in, in the south end of Kenmore, near Kirkland, and then it also, it does go down in the north end of Kirkland. That was 2016. In 2017, we did, we rebuilt three of our main circuits that serve Kenmore, two in the north and one in the south, Kenmore Circuits 26, 27, and 23. And then we also rebuilt another major transmission line that serves Kenmore. You can't actually see it on this map, but it is one of your main transmission sources. It's called our Stillwater to Cottage Brook Line, and it runs through Woodenville, Bothell. It, it's, like I said, it's your other secondary main transmission source, and it was a significant investment for the regional area. For this year planned, as part of our whole picture of rebuilding and redoing our northern, northern facilities in Kenmore, we'll be rebuilding the Kenmore substation. We'll also be doing some continued replacement on underground cable. So that's something that we've talked about in the past. I didn't review it in your other maps, and we didn't call it out because it wasn't as significant of portions as it is for this year. But underground serves many of the developments throughout Kenmore. It was put in the 1970s that slated to be replaced, that the cable that serves those developments has found to be failing quicker than we anticipated. And so it's on a kind of case, it's, it's going, it's being replaced as it was installed. So you'll see it kind of in different stages around town. You'll see us going maybe on, you know, 185th Street this year, and then next year we'll be on 189th Street, just based on when it was developed. And so we have planned for this year, and then there'll be more cable replacements in 2019 as well. One thing I wanted to talk about that we did a lot of work on, and many community members saw and were impacted by traffic, but certainly noticed this past year was our, what we call our vegetation management work, or our tree trimming work. So part of the franchise talks about our cycle of tree trimming. We tree trim, we do full circuit tree trimming every four years, and we do hot spotting annually, what we call hot spotting, or tree trimming out problem areas every year. So this year, 2017, I think five of the circuits that serve Kenmore were slated to have full vegetation sweeps. And I thought it would be useful for you to kind of see what that looks like, how the crews access the trees and the tree trimming that they do do. So that was our every-four-year trimming. In addition, we did significant tree trimming and tree removals for those circuit rebuilds that we just reviewed for 2017, this past year. So it was a heavy year for vegetation management in Kenmore. So this is another set of pictures. You can see, it's, it's always interesting for folks, I think, to see just how big the equipment is and how high up the, the tree, the tree crews do go. So today, as you all may, have probably heard, there was an outage in northern Kenmore for a hundred-foot cedar that fell. Our arborist deemed it was healthy. It's on private property. It didn't appear to have any damage, but you can see in these photos, there are unhealthy trees that were over 100 feet. So our, the tallest boom is that white boom. It goes 100 feet in the air, and then they climb from there. So in that one, he climbed about 130 feet in the air before he was able to rope off the first limb and lower it down. So that's just standard vegetation management in, in a heavily treated area like Kenmore. I also want to talk about, I know I've spent a lot of time talking here in council about Circuit 26. It's been our most problematic circuit in Kenmore. These are the pictures of what it used to look like, and these are the pictures of what it looks like now. So Circuit 26 and 27 looked very similar, heavy trees, lots of stuff, backyards, just not very accessible. And even with, even with the significant tree trimming we've done in the past, you can still see there's just a lot on both sides. So we rerouted Circuit 26, which is what this is, onto 198th Street. Now, as you can see on the lower photo, you can see the circuit the whole way down. So when the serviceman goes to patrol, for instance, on an outage like today, they're able to turn, restore the power, turn the power back on much more quickly. 27 was the same thing. We did a lot of vegetation management, a lot of tree trimming and tree removal, and then rebuilt that with tree, what we call tree wire. Many of you have heard me talk about that in the past. I didn't get into a lot of details on that unless there are questions, but you can see that, you can see the full circuits now. It's a big difference. I just wanted to talk about what, what we've invested in the community in the past several years and what we have planned. So 2016 saw 20, 6.3 million in capital improvements in Kenmore. 2017 was 9.8. We have 2.7 million, including the substation rebuild and cable work for this year, 2018. And then our vegetation management, our four-year cycle, we spent about $170,000 to trim 32 miles of circuit in the city of Kenmore. This is something we always incorporate into our presentations, is how do you get in touch with PSE during a storm? Most folks are familiar now with our outage map. It's a very useful tool. It tells you when to estimate power restoration. In fact, today was a good example. It estimated by 4:00, and all but the folks that were directly adjacent to the tree were restored by 3:42, I think. You can always call 1-888-CALL-PSC, and then you can follow us on all of our social media. And then there's my contact information for further questions. And then at this point, you can ask me questions, or we can save that for the end after Nancy does hers.
Questions? Oh, Councilmember Marshall?
Could you tell us again what tree wire is? What's its purpose? Approximately how much is it?
Yes, so I'll go back to the map just for reference. If you don't mind, let's flip through it quickly. So tree wire is a coated wire that we install on places where the wires are easily accessible. So it's a coated wire that means when a tree branch impacts two phases, so a circuit is three, made of three phases, when a tree branch impacts two of those phases, the power stays on. If there's a significant impact to all three phases, then the power would go out. Most of our outages, what we call, what are classified internally often as nuisance outages, those why is my power out, it's, you know, out for two and a half hours, three hours, are from branches. And so tree wire prevents those outages and reduces them significantly. So if you, if you looked at the new wire, it's black in appearance. It's on heavier poles usually, and the old wire is silver-looking. That's the difference. I mean, it's black, and it, and it prevents a lot of outages. That's tree wire in a nutshell. We've, we've rebuilt three circuits with tree wire, so that would be the Kenmore 26 Circuit, the Kenmore 27 Circuit on 185th, and then the Kenmore 23 Circuit on Arrowhead Drive. There are portions of those circuits that are actually slated for rebuild in 2019, so they're like a little piece that might be left, but these are the main backbone of those three circuits. Yep. Yes, yep, thank you for asking.
Councilmember Smith?
I'm sorry, yeah, if, those are already underground. Yep, yep, yep.
Can you go to the one that shows the money's expended for the, those three years?
Oops, sorry.
Yeah. So there have been many millions spent since 16 on, on bringing older equipment up to current status. This maintenance, um, who's paying for that?
That goes-
Is this going to be in, in addition to customers' bills?
This goes into our normal rate base. So it's capitalized, and then it's put into our, I guess, appro- it's appropriated across our entire service territory.
So then it's not gonna be just billed indirectly to the residents of Kenmore, it's across your entire service base?
Right. And I will point, one thing I did want to point out, you'll see there's a significant difference between 2016, 2017, and this year. And transmission facilities, as you saw in my previous slide, we rebuilt two, the two main transmission lines that serve Kenmore. Those make up the bulk of that expenditure, and then this year, the bulk of the expenditure is the substation.
Any other questions on this? All right. Oh, you do? Deputy Mayor?
Got a couple of questions. So at the council retreat, we were discussing this a little bit, and I think as Rob said that, said that as part of this, there'd be a charging station included, but when I looked at this, all I saw was discuss plans to partner a charging station? That doesn't quite sound the same as they're building us a charging station. Did I misunderstand staff, or?
We'll, we'll be covering this in the, in the next presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Curtis?
I just want to say I was happy to do the tour last Friday and actually see on the ground what things look like and be able to just ask a whole gob of questions. So thank you guys for coming out and doing that for us.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, we're gonna continue and now discuss the two documents that we'd like to present to you tonight. One is a franchise agreement, dual franchise agreement with Puget Sound Energy, and the other is a memorandum of understanding that deals with reliability and, and performance issues. First, Rob, did you have any remarks that you wanted to start out with? Okay. Obviously, this is, this is a project that we have been working on for, for quite a long time, and the people of Kenmore have been living with a lot of challenges about reliability for their, for their power for an even longer time. And so we're, we're hopeful that, that the work that has gone into this will really be a very durable agreement. It will, it will be clear as people move along to new assignments and, and different players are, are working on both sides of the, of the conversation. And, and what we're gonna present to you tonight is really the highlights of, of these two documents there. And as I'm sure you've, you've found, there's a lot of detail in, in there. And obviously, if you have any questions about any of that detail that if by chance we don't mention it, please, please let us know. What you're going to be reviewing is, is a non-exclusive franchise agreement about PSE's activities in the city of right-of-way, and this is for electrical and natural gas facilities. What's different about this franchise that, that you're gonna be considering, very different from, in, in a lot of ways, from the present franchise, which was adopted in 2005, is that it's only effective when the accompanying memorandum of understanding is, is executed. And that MOU, as we call it, is, is pretty detailed about different activities that, that include annual reports to the, to the city council on circuit performance, outages, and, and a whole variety of other discussions around customer service, updated technology, and, and other issues. And it's important to note that the city doesn't regulate PSE's activities. These, these agreements deal with their activities in the right-of-way in, in the city. The Utilities and Transportation Commission, state of Washington, is, is the regulator. Of course, you'll see in the, in the agreements, lots of references to, as tariffs allow or, or WTC regulations allow. So that's, that's what that is about. We're gonna be discussing this, this information tonight, and then come back to you next Monday for action on, on these two documents. So when we, when we talk about what were the things that, that we were going for in, in these discussions, which began just about a year ago, in February 2017, we had been looking at our 2005 agreement, adding issues, points to it, and we came to the council in 2017 and said, you know, this is, this is the stuff that, that we would like to see in, in a new agreement. And a lot of it, of course, had to do with improved reliability for, for the people of Kenmore. I can't tell you how many times I would get a phone call and he, and hear the description of third world. This is like living in, in the, in the third world as far as our reliability. And of course, people also experienced, you know, looking out their window and, and seeing a couple of blocks away that the lights would be on, and that happened to be provided by a different provider. And so we, you know, we have a lot of work to do, and I, I will say that, that, you know, and Rob in, in particular, and, and council, I mean, everyone has, has really engaged on this and has really engaged with, with Puget Sound Energy at all levels of, of the organization. And I, I think that really made a difference as, as we were all working towards something that would, would make a difference for the, the people of Kenmore. So reliability was a big focus of our conversations. If you look at the 2005 agreement, you won't see much in the way of, of natural gas facilities mentioned. You might recall that there was a, a big explosion in the Greenwood neighborhood of, of Seattle in the last year or two, a decommissioned facility. And so you'll see information in the, in the proposed agreement that, that deals with those situations, about what are, how to decommission and, and, and how to, how to make sure that those, those facilities are safe. One thing that's not on this list, but that we, that, you know, with 10 years later, 12 years later, that we spent a lot of time on was better mapping of, of where stuff is, and where we could have the GIS layers available. where we could have the GIS layers available. So we spent a fair amount of time on that. And you just approved an ordinance about relocating facilities and the requirements for that. That was something that we spent quite a lot of time on. It was very helpful to have John and Chris Overly, when she was still with the city, talking about what are the practical things, day-to-day project headaches that come up, and how can we minimize those? And along with that, third-party users of PSC poles, there is not one mention of that in the 2005 agreement. So that's a whole new arena of issues that's come up. Everyone agreed that a couple of years ago, it was time for a turnaround, and we had a chance to really affect a turnaround. And one thing that the council authorized was hiring an engineering firm. They had happened to do some work with the city of Bellevue a few years ago. And they are experts in power reliability and failure analysis. And they looked at WTC reports and concluded that the circuits in Kenmore were among the least reliable of any in their whole system. And seven of the 10 in that 2010 to 2015 time period actually performed in the lowest 25% of the entire system. And their assessment, a lot of distribution lines were older equipment. And as you heard, trees and vegetation played a big role in making them more vulnerable. And here are some of the things that they specifically recommended to do. And Councilmember Shrebnik and I had a conversation about this on Friday, about, yeah, how does the recommendations of how to improve things find their way into the agreement? And as you heard just a few minutes ago, some of these things have already been accomplished by PSC. So new equipment, reclosers and sectionalizing switches. And we heard about the rebuilding of the circuits 26 and 27 and improving reliability issues in other circuits. More frequent vegetation patrols. They told us here's what the best management practice is in other parts of the country, and so we've incorporated that. And as well as modern technologies available in other cities. And they also recommended having these detailed reliability reports by circuit and a regular reporting mechanism to the city. And they also agreed with us that establishing a way for them to, for PSC and the city to have, you know, very clear dialogue when we were updating our comprehensive plan or other growth plans. You know, you think of Lake Point coming on board and making sure that we're in close communication about what would the power needs be. So that's what also informed what we came to you in February 2017, saying like, we're about to get started with negotiations, and here's what we want to go for. This is a slide that you already really heard about from PSC that I think will help connect the dots between what were those recommendations and some of the things that have already taken place. And so here are some of the high-level features of the new franchise agreement that you're going to be considering. Our present agreement had a 10-year term. So that ended in 2015, but obviously, the agreement was still in effect until a new agreement is approved. This is a different sort of term. It's a five-year term, but it can be extended by an additional five years by mutual agreement. And this is something that's, I think, pretty unusual. Our city attorney has had a chance to check around with some other franchise agreements. It's a shorter term. And I think that's one provision that we talked with you about last year and just trying to get as much enforcement capability as we could. As I mentioned, the natural gas safety and how to decommission unused facilities, the improved mapping. There is an enforcement mechanism, a bond. It's in the amount of $20,000 for a number of different provisions about, is there interference with safe passage on sidewalks? Is there relocation issues? It's more than just a construction bond. So that's different from the current agreement. And I mentioned not interference of facilities. This adds bicycle passage and also references American Disabilities Act standards to the present language. And then vegetation management. I confess, it's the same, one of the same photos you just saw in Ray Lynn's presentation, that there will be annual patrols to identify areas that need trimming. And my understanding was that the patrols would be of areas in the third year of their four-year trim cycle. But also, I think this would be a more comprehensive patrol. And staying with the general trimming and management, at least every four years. We checked with Snow County PUD and also City Light, and their general trimming interval is four years as well. City staff can accompany PSC in these patrols. And there's a commitment to a 24-hour response if a customer calls in a concern about vegetation management near their residence. And I'm going to let John talk about one of his favorite topics, and Don as well, and that is relocation and third-party users.
So our current franchise is pretty light on relocation requirements for utilities. It, for the most part, just says, "You will relocate upon request by the city." And as Nancy mentioned, it's silent regarding third-party users that are attached to PSC poles. What we have added to the franchise is a specific procedure for getting utilities relocated. We added timeframes and specific information that needs to be provided. And we also included information into the franchise as to what happens if the utilities don't get relocated by the time that was agreed upon. We've also added information regarding third parties and a collaborative effort between PSC and the city to determine who is on those poles and to facilitate getting those utilities relocated. While we do have franchise with most of those third-party utilities, we often need help from PSC to identify those utilities. And so we've also added in information that they are to provide us with a list of utilities that are on their poles. That's it.
The memorandum of understanding is a separate document, but like I mentioned earlier, it needs to be signed in order for the franchise to become effective. We're aware of several other jurisdictions that have MOUs with PSC. My understanding is that some of them deal with, like, very specific vegetation issues around substations, or they're very focused. Bellevue has an MOU that's been in effect for, I believe, you know, five to 10 years. And it deals with reliability, but it has only, like, two of the provisions of the MOU that we're asking you to consider tonight. And that's the reliability reporting and outage reporting. So this really takes a number of steps beyond what we're aware of in the service area with PSC. So on the slide, there's annual reporting, also, you know, written report plus a discussion with the city council once a year. And it's about reliability, outages, how long it took to restore power, and also reliability comparison with bordering cities in the PSC service area. Be an update on projects to improve reliability and an update on using smart grid technology and reducing reliance on fossil fuel. And in regular conversations and meetings between PSC and the city, it'd be an opportunity to focus on, okay, are there these circuits that continue to be a problem, that they're not performing at the system average across PSC's system? And other things like communicating with customers on restitution, easement access. That was a big deal in the Circuit 26 area. And so I don't know about you, but when I bought my house, it was like, oh, yeah, there's an easement for Seattle City Light. But it's easy to kind of not remember or understand what is the responsibility of the property owner in those situations. And again, just going back to the exponent report, new technology and having the ability to participate in that with the grid tie. Long-range planning and potential legislative agenda items that we may want to consider that would serve to improve power reliability for Kenmore customers. Also, not on the slide, is cooperation on emergency management activities and communication protocols that are really already in place about when there's an outage, like when the cedar tree fell down today. Rob and I each got texts from Ray Lynn about, okay, here's what happened, here's when we expect the power to be restored. And so that sort of communication has been going on now for about a year. But again, it's nice to have it written down and continue that expectation.
And I figured out how not to have any more power outages. Just don't put this topic on your council agenda, and then you won't have power outages.
Also, electric charging station, to your question, Deputy Mayor. There is the language in there, and when we say, like, discuss or partner on an electric charging station, the city already has conduit to two different locations. And so I truly expect that there will be a charging station by this time next year, if not sooner.
Would that be with additional city resources going into it, or...?
We haven't talked to the details, but I believe that having the transmission and the conduit in place is often a big part of the expense of installing one.
Other questions? Yes, Councilmember Nuduski.
First, I want to thank staff and PSC for putting all this together. It's a huge amount of work, and it's just a lot better than the last franchise agreement. So thank you for that. And thank you for PSC for all your improvements so far in Kenmore. That said, my power has gone out three times since December 23rd, which is less than a month. So we've got some work to do. Hopefully, this substation will help. I guess my main question is around all the reliability wording. There's a lot of great words on reporting and working with the city and words like that, but I didn't see any real teeth in to make sure that some of these happen. So we get this all signed, and then PSC decides they don't want to do a project, or, you know, there's just, you know, they could drop off and go. And I just didn't see anything that's going to force them to finish these projects and make sure that we're still reliable. So maybe talk a minute about that.
Well, we always go back to the fact that we don't regulate this utility. But I think that having very clear expectations, you know, there has been, you know, broader attention given to the struggles that we've had in Kenmore. And I think that, and Don may want to weigh in on this because we were in most of the discussions together, that I think having this kind of structure is going to help.
And I'd be happy to add to that, is that we had the understanding that the UTC and capital expenditures, they're all rolled into that rate regulation. However, it was in our minds, with the short term, the five-year, to address any concerns if they arise, just like you said. Well, we have this franchise, and it's signed, but then they went away, and they didn't do what they said they would do, which is the additional reliability. You have five years to determine, are they going to do what they said they do? And that's why we chose that shorter term. Generally, you start to renegotiate around two years prior to it ending, and it's taken us about 18 months. So I think that's kind of your teeth, is, do we have a problem in three years?
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
So again, I'm going to kind of, Councilmember Nuduski kind of stole a little bit of what I was going to say. I want to thank staff for all the work that's gone into this. I know this has been a big lift for everybody involved as far as that goes. This is definitely a unique and innovative agreement that we're looking at here. And I've personally seen some reliability improvements. It used to be that if the wind gusted, I lost power. It was never kind of a question, it was a joke, you know? If it was windy, it wasn't a question of if we were losing power, but it was a question of when that night we were going to lose power. And that has definitely gotten better. But the bar was really low. It was terrible out here. We had a huge chunk of our population was on circuits that were, you know, in the lower, in the lowest quintile of their reliability. And it took, frankly, it took public shaming to get Puget Sound Energy to come out here and address our problems. It took television coming out and talking about Kenmore. It took, I mean, we have a Facebook group dedicated to Kenmore power outages. That's sad. We just posted today on it, somebody went and listed off their six outages they've had since the end of November, November 29th, December 9th, December 23rd, December 29th, January 5th, and then today. So there's still problems in the system. And I don't think our citizens are, well, things have gotten better. We definitely aren't there yet with the improvements that have been made. And as I've been saying, as I said at the council retreat, and as I said when we started this, I would be much more comfortable voting for an agreement that actually has some sort of teeth built into it. If PSC is spending, you know, upwards of $19 million on the infrastructure that's in and around Kenmore, and if they're confident that that's going to address our liability, then they should be willing to put some skin in the game. And, well, I understand that we don't regulate... And while I understand that we don't regulate PSE, the MOU is a separate contract between two entities. We can put kind of almost anything in there that we both agree to, I think. And right now, if the power goes out, all Puget Sound Energy loses is the income that they'd be making, the revenue that they'd be making by selling people power. Our residents are losing the contents of their fridges still. I am not certain that I can go home and tell my neighbors that I'm comfortable voting for this at this point. I recognize that we went above and beyond what a lot of other cities have done, but with the problems that we have been experiencing historically, I think the bar needs to be a little bit higher. Or we're going to be paying gallatin a lot to publicly shame PSE again. And I'd rather not go that route. I recognize we've been getting more attention, we've been getting better service. I'm not certain that that's going to continue down the road. They're privately, you know, they're a company whose goal at the end of the day is to make profit. There's nothing wrong with that. But my goal is to make sure that my neighbors don't have to throw out the contents of their fridges again. I had to do it twice in one year, just a couple of years ago, and my daughter missed a day of school because of a power outage. So while I recognize, and I applaud, all the work that's gone into this and how far we've kind of stretched where we can go with this, I'm still not 100% certain that I'm able to be able to vote to approve this next week with how this is set up. So I just wanted to lay that out there.
Councilmember Shrebnik.
Thanks. I'll try not to repeat, but I have very similar sentiments. I also want to thank staff for the great work and for PSE for investing, you know, nearly 20 million into our community, which is significant. But I have to say that I think the proof is going to be in the changes in reliability. And I would love to see the MOU have, you know, some very specific performance metrics included before we are kind of signing off. Things like, you know, nine out of 10 circuits will be performing at or above system average. I mean, whatever we can get to in a negotiation, it would be nice to have something more specific dealing with the outcome of reliability as part of that MOU.
Councilmember Smith.
Well, excuse me, thank you to staff and also to PSE for all the work. I know it's been a lot that, and it seems like it's been a long process, and I'm sure on your end, it seems like it's been very long. But, excuse me, Councilmember Shrebnik just hit on one of the aspects that I actually wanted to add to, and that was why we, since we know that we have quantifiable data as far as where we were in this percentiles with the SADI and the SAFI reporting, and that, why can't we use that as a quantifiable measuring stick to know where our performance is at a certain point? And it seems like that would be something I would, I think, would really be an asset to the agreement and give you some sense of confidence that at least we all have the same goal then. We can see what it is, and we can see, we can measure whether or not they've hit that percentile ranking. And so that, so I just wanted to add to that. But actually, the question I had has to do with Section 26, and it's on the assignment of the franchise. And it says that, I mean, I don't expect PSE to be going away anytime soon, but the way corporations merge, buy, sell, and you never know what happens. And we see it all the time in the telecommunications industry. And I know that when we experienced the very poor performance from Frontier after they took over, it makes, you know, I look at that and I go, that seems like, it basically says, you know, yeah, they have to have our approval, but I'm sure there's legal standing that would say we can't deny reasonable approval. And so, how, I guess my point is, what assurance do we have if in two years, PSE is taken over by another company or a corporation that's even bigger than they are now, and that their commitment diminishes to our community?
And I think I'll be able to answer that. So, looking at Section 26, as you noted, we, the city council has the opportunity, if PSE comes to you and says, someone's taking us over, we need to assign this contract, the approval would be in the form of an ordinance, much like when Verizon was taken over by Frontier, there was an ordinance which assigned, approved assignment, and then committed Frontier, horrible example, but raises your concerns, that they would in fact abide by those. I think at that point, if there's a concern with the entity and perhaps the ability to follow through in those promises, that you amend this franchise. That's your opportunity to do so. And you don't give approval under an ordinance, which I think would be reasonable unless you set certain standards for that amendment and then assignment. But I think you wait to see who the entity is, what they can in fact bring to the reliability table, if you will.
So can we unilaterally amend that agreement, or we just make that part of the approval of the ordinance at the time?
We ask them to, it's not unilateral because it's an amendment to a franchise. A franchise is basically a contract between the two entities on how the right-of-way will be regulated, but it is a contract, so it's not unilateral. But for your reasonable approval, I would say you can ask for an amendment which identifies how to enforce those provisions.
And so that then leads to, why wouldn't we want those provisions in here now? If we would ask for them later, does, and something like the 20,000, or I think $20,000 bond, performance bond issue, you know, we would probably ask for a greater bond at that point, I would assume, because 20,000 wouldn't have much teeth in it. And so, wouldn't it be reasonable to just ask for it now? That's what I'm, I'm trying to understand why.
Understood. So, through the negotiation process, there were, you know, it was, there was a higher amount that staff had requested, understanding that the bond amount was targeted towards enforcement of the franchise terms themselves. So, as mentioned, relocation, abandonment, if something's unsafe, we can pull the bond if they don't do it for some reason. They came back with a lower number. It is, of course, this council's ability to approve or not, or to ask for a change in that, that's why it's before you today. So if you think that's not sufficient, please articulate that. That's simply how the staff and PSE staff came to that number. Remember though, that reliability isn't in your franchise. It's not tied to that bond amount either. It's again, how do we require enforcement when we can't make them do a capital project? But I understand your concern. We're trying to address that with the term, we're trying to address that with annual check-ins, and perhaps it is just continued public relations. I don't know, we're trying to figure that out ourselves.
So, and I realize that I kind of mixed apples and oranges with the bond issue, but it relates back though to the performance, a performance measurement, where it just seems logical to have it in there so if there is a transfer or something, or not even a transfer, just so that they perform as contractually obligated. And so that's, I would love to be able to see something like that in there if we could get there.
I think I recall reading, one of the things that it was, 500,000 has been reduced to 20.
I think that was a request.
That's what we went in to the discussions with.
All right, Councilmember Curtis. One second, one second, I think, Councilmember, no, you've already, did you already, okay, Councilmember Curtis.
So, I guess I have a little different perspective than some of my fellow council members. I'm a math kind of a guy, and I have a couple of examples of how I see this. So, in my work as the medical director for primary care at Evergreen, we were at the bottom of the Washington Health Alliance quality measures. And partially was, they didn't even have the right list of doctors, but it didn't matter. Every time our CEO went to a meeting, he had explained why we were at the bottom. So here we are, in reliability, we're at the bottom. That's just where we started. And in one year, I got us up to 50th percentile, and it took just a plumb lot of work to get us there. And in the next year, we got to the bottom of the top quartile. That represented so much work and time. So I guess I see that we've implemented a lot of changes, a lot of money has been put in capital improvements. And until we actually get a year of measure and see, did we make any difference? I'm an eternal optimist, that helps a lot. I'm assuming that this is going to make a difference. So, I'm sort of of the standpoint of saying, I think we've got a unique agreement here. We've worked really hard as two entities to come to an agreement that I can support. And I'll tell you in a year how excited I am, once I get some data. It's kind of like if you want to go, so like my family lives in Spokane. So if I leave at 5:00 on a Friday afternoon, and it's taken me an hour to get to Issaquah, I have to go pretty fast the rest of the time to get to Spokane at 60 miles per hour average. And that's how we were in the reliability era, we were so far behind, it's going to take some time to catch up. So I don't have any expectation we will solve this in one year. Thank you.
Let me see, I can get you to go back one slide. The third bullet up from the bottom, customer communication on restitution opportunities. Are there any restitution opportunities for people who lose food multiple times a year?
Dawn and I looked into that, yes.
So I was looking at the PSE tariffs, they're called rate schedules. And the only thing I could find, so I would invite PSE to come up to add if I'm missing anything else, is that I found that customers, in a limited amount, it's not every customer, but the customers who have an outage for 120 hours, which is five days, could ask, I believe it's a $50 credit. But that's all I found for restitution types, understanding it's just a normal outage. But again, I'm happy to ask PSE that because I didn't have that much time to dive much further into it than just looking at the rate schedules.
So, part of, I'll just speak to it briefly, and if you have more questions on it, we can talk about it.
Puget Sound Energy and the Utilities and Transportation Commission went through a long SQI, Service Quality Index, let's call it, negotiation for years. And what came out of that is this 120-hour guarantee of restoration of power, that was post-Honaka Eve storm, and the $50 restitution. Public council weighed in on that, PSE and the UTC, and that's what they came to. So, it's, it's, I mean, it goes on, on our call log, if you call in during a power outage, and it's determined to be a storm, we switch to this 120-hour guarantee with that kind of constant messaging on our, I'm not using the right term, but auto messaging when you call in the 1-888, call PSE. And that is our restitution opportunity for customers that are out of power as approved by the UTC.
I mean, I understand after the Hanukkah storm that that was a SEP, but, you know, we're talking about a company whose net income last year was $380 million. I don't know about you, but my fridge contents are worth way more than 50 bucks. And the, just living in a house without power, without heat, without a CPAP, if you're somebody who needs that, it's worth a lot more than 50 dollars to me, I think. And I understand that that's something that the UTC controls, but again, I don't see any reason why we couldn't go further in our separate MOU with PSE unless there's some sort of, you know, preemption thing. But again, it's not a law that we're trying to pass, we're trying to pass a contract between two entities. I don't see any reason why we couldn't negotiate something a little bit more humane.
And I think that topic was raised in our mutual meetings. It's my understanding, and again, we could ask clarification from PSE, that reimbursement requests, monetary requests are regulated strictly through rate-making, and that's the province of the UTC, and that they kept raising, you cannot have unfair or advantageous, if you will, benefits over anybody else. And I remember looking at the statute, and I said, no, you can't discriminate unreasonably. You know, how is that unreasonable? But again, they would have to offer it to everybody. And they were saying, you can't just target Kenmore citizens for some additional compensation. So it'd be something you'd have to seek through the UTC for all of their rate customers. Is that correct? Or, please, that was kind of my takeaway, but I don't know if that's accurate.
I also need to correct myself on the previous discussion on the 120-hour guarantee. That's during a storm event. On a non-declared storm event, if you lose power for 24 hours or more, then we reimburse you for 50 dollars. So, I want to make sure that was clear.
Reimburse you for, I didn't hear you, for how much?
50 dollars as well, it's the same amount, it's a regulated amount. Puget Sound Energy can only negotiate on things not regulated by the UTC under the rate tariff, and that includes restitution.
So, I would like to just point out that there is a standard for when we would be reporting back on, or PSE would be reporting back on reliability in those annual reports, and it's how do those circuits stack up to the system-wide reliability measures of frequency of outages and duration of outages? So, that is a benchmark. If you want us to look a little further about, and come back with some language about what's a goal to get up to system average, if we're not at that point, then we can certainly do that.
Councilmember Marshall? Oh, I'm sorry, City Manager.
I defer to Councilmember Marshall. Perhaps this for Ms. Rightan, was, do you think that the default provision of the franchise agreement, which provides that after the procedure is gone through, looks like 30-day intervals, that the agreement can be terminated? Does that apply to the memorandum of understanding?
Can you reference the section the default's in?
Section 22.
Thank you. So, the default would apply to the franchise itself, and while the memorandum of understanding is anticipated to be executed prior to the effectiveness of the franchise, I don't believe that Section 22 would apply to the MOU because they're two separate documents. One triggers the effectiveness of one, but the terms of the franchise don't apply to the other.
Is that, if you look at Section 32, and it sort of incorporates the memorandum of understanding into the franchise agreement, it says it may be enforced under the terms and conditions. How does that square?
Oh, no, I stand corrected. That sentence, in fact, would suggest that even the bonding amount or the enforcement of the franchise would be utilized for the language, which would, if the default is an enforcement mechanism, then it would apply. Yep, you're welcome.
Your Honor.
Yes, City Manager.
So, it sounds like some or most of you would like a performance standard in the And you as city council can give us specific direction tonight. One thought, like Nancy was just alluded to, you could say to us, tell PSE that the MOU needs to have performance language in there that says something like, and you can give us direction, but here's an example, that by the end of year two, X number of our circuits need to be at or above average of SADI, SAFI. So if you want to give us some sort of, some sort of direction like that that we can take back to PSE... take back to PSE, we can certainly do that. That's your prerogative as a city council to direct us accordingly.
Yeah, Councilmember Smith.
So from the regulatory side, I don't know what we're, what we can and cannot ask for on something like that. Is that, I mean, I assume there are a number of restrictions, am I correct? Or do we have a considerable amount of leeway in the negotiation?
You know what? In our negotiations, a set standard, there wasn't really a discussion. I think it's, there is an opportunity to have that discussion. And I'm not aware of UTC tariffs that would preclude such a discussion, but because it's new and we didn't discuss this in the meetings, I guess we'll find out. But I don't think there's anything today that I know that would preclude that type of conversation.
It doesn't hurt for you to try.
Never does.
So I personally would love to see it. I'm just not, I didn't come prepared to figure out what that standard or that solution would be.
Yeah, you could, you could even say that by, it'll be this standard by year two, and then if it's not, then we either reopen or the franchise just ends. But, you know, you could say, of our 10 circuits, you want, I'm picking a number, seven of them above average by the end of year two, and 10, all 10 by the end of year three, or something like that.
Councilmember Danuski.
Yeah, I like that type of wording, but without, I guess I don't have enough data to fill in the blanks, knowing what they're doing, what they haven't done, what they haven't done, you know, what's going to be able to be put on a capital project plan. I guess I don't know the numbers, so just sitting up here to be able to say, yes, this many can be at 50%. I don't even know if that's doable. So maybe that's something staff can work on and come to something that's reasonable.
That was going to be my suggestion, is maybe we get the general guidance from the council, then we could go back and come up with at least a couple of options.
If you may, I see, I see it as two separate issues. There's really, one is, you first have to set what the standard is, and then the second is, well, what is the penalty or what happens if you don't meet that? So there, and I, like Councilmember Danuski, I don't have enough information to set either of those, based on what I know. But I do know that when they can come out and put, you know, that we're in the, you know, seven out of 10, or in the lower 20 percentile or 25 percentile, then that's a standard that's clearly unacceptable. So it seems like it would be reasonable that we could agree to a standard that's reasonably acceptable.
Well, what I've seen, and the language that's in the MOU that's before you now is the system average. So performing at at least the system average, kind of trigger is like, okay, this is something that needs to be improved if it's below average in any way. So that's just one suggestion for what a standard could be. Yeah, I think Rob's direction, your direction, I think is what I would hope for, whether it's an overall system average or better, or whether it's by circuit, I'm not sure which is the most appropriate approach, but something like that would, and starting in year two, which, you know, I agree with Milton's point, that, you know, starting in year one, obviously they're still doing investments. So we want to wait until the investments have been made before looking at the performance. But doing something like that and having it escalate until it's an appropriate level.
Councilmember Curtis, you had something?
Again, not knowing the exact numbers, but it seems to me like mathematically, 50% of people will be above average and 50% of people will be below average. We were clearly well below that. So even if we just said half of our circuits will hit median or average, that would be a significant improvement compared to what we've been dealing with in the past. So for us to say, we want to be better than everybody else, it feels just a little unfair. You know, we represent Kenmore, obviously, and we can say that, we want to be in the top quartile. But for sure, I would say we want our folks to be at that median.
I, can I, I'd be concerned with that, because then you could be allowing five of your circuits to be in the bottom quartile. I recommend that we take the Lake Wobegon approach, where, you know, in Lake Wobegon, all the kids are above average. I think we can shoot for that. I think we've been way in the bottom quartile for way too long. I think it's time for us to have our turn in the Lake Wobegon stratosphere. Councilmember Smith.
I have a question completely off, it's on the franchise agreement, but not on this issue. I would like to ask it unless somebody else had more questions on this particular thing, if that's all right? Okay. So this, it's on 18.11, and it has to do with the 24-hour response from a customer. And I would appreciate if you could tell me, is that something, I'll wait till you get there. It just says, "PSC shall commit to providing 24-hour response time when a customer contacts PSC about vegetation management on or near their residence." And so my question is, if they're committing to a 24-hour response time, does that mean that they will send out somebody and they will address the issue within 24 hours? I mean, am I reading that correctly? So any citizen, if they're concerned about a tree limb by a power line, they have the ability to call and they will get 24-hour response?
Well, that's my reading of the section.
Okay. And so within that, is, does that go, does that citizen deal directly with PSC, or is the city in the loop in that? So how do we know if they're, if they're providing 24-hour response, or do we just rely on them to tell us that they did?
I think it's both. I think that the citizen has to directly contact a PSC, and hopefully, because they've committed to it, they in fact, within a 24-hour period, address those issues. And then we have, again, the check-ins required by the MOU for vegetation management, for reliability. We had a very lengthy and specific discussion about how many outages it would take to get on the report, and at one point it was 50 or 100, but I think it's, there's no, it's any outages right now, any, because we didn't want to wait till it hit a threshold, we wanted to hear as soon as we could, because we knew we'd hear it anyway. And so we just thought, you know, so I think, yes, it's both them working with PSC, PSC coming to the council, but also the citizen contacting us if that's necessary.
Okay. So if, just so I understand this. So if, if I walked out of my house and I saw a tree that's got a limb that looks like it could fall on the power lines, there would be nothing to prevent me from calling PSC and knowing that I would have 24-hour response? I just want to make sure, that seems great, and I just want to make sure that that's, I understand it the way it's written.
That's my reading, too.
Okay, okay. It would sure be nice if we could track that. I would love to know, I don't know how, if that can be factored in somehow, but I would just like to know that that is being addressed, if there's a way to do that.
If it's agreeable to the council, PSC would like to speak to some of the standards.
So I just want to reiterate that we hear you loud and clear, we understand your concerns about reliability, we understand your concerns about your circuits being our lower quartile. PSC is a regulated utility by the Washington State Utilities and Transportation Commission. Our nondiscriminatory clause would prevent us from entering into an MOU that would put a percentile on our performance in the city of Kenmore. You have a five-year franchise before you, we want to perform well, you see our projects that we have planned for this year, we have additional work planned for 2019. We would be back in front of staff negotiating almost before 2019 is in our hindsight. We want to perform well, but because of our regulated status, we will only enter into certain clauses. We will talk with you, we will hear you if we have poor performance, but given that we cannot predict how the UTC would regulate our rates, how the UTC would regulate our performance in other areas, we are bound to discuss it, but we would not be able to enter into that kind of an agreement or a contract. And I wanted to make that clear, so we didn't come back in a week with a different expectation. If you have questions about it, I'm more than happy to discuss it in detail, we can go back and forth. But I did want you to understand where PSC's position was. You also have the ability, the default clause, to negate the contract if you're unhappy. So there are multiple ways the city can decide not to pursue this franchise, or to take away the franchise, to take away our rights to operate in your right of way. But because of our regulated status, we are bound to only agree to certain things in a memorandum of understanding, which becomes part of the franchise, which is something that is regulated for us.
Yes, Councilmember Smith.
I think what's so, what's difficult and why, and I appreciate your comments, but it's, you know, we already see all the investments that's already been made in the last two years, in 2016 and 2017, and yet we're still seeing the outages. So it's like, if you're still getting them when you're in the middle of the negotiation, what can you expect afterwards? And so that's what's really tough. And that's why, I mean, I know, I don't want to make light of it, but that's why it's an issue, because it feels like, it feels like we're in a position where we're being asked to approve something, that it's not working now, and supposedly we're two-thirds of the way through your investment period there. And that's what's tough. And that's what makes it hard for me to not look at some kind of performance.
And I can appreciate that. I think Puget Sound Energy has understood and heard that loud and clear. As you know, a couple of our outages were from our substation, which will be replaced and rebuilt this year. That happened, the last two outages prior to today were out of our substation. I understand that makes it difficult, this, it couldn't have been worse timing for today, but there, no matter how much improvement we do in the system, we can never present, we can never prevent a 100-foot cedar tree from falling for an unknown reason, no matter what our arborists can see from the outside. I can never prevent a windstorm from impacting the city, depending on the wind direction. So because of that, and because of our performance obligations to our entire service territory and our nondiscriminatory clause, while I can appreciate that the outages have not helped our cause in recent days, recent weeks, that is where our limit stands.
And if I may, I just want to clarify, we did have these discussions with PSC and PSC's attorney, and it's not no discrimination or can't be different, have to be exactly the same. The statute was, you can't unreasonably discriminate. And so I think there is still, understanding, I think, the focus of this council and your concerns, I think there's still room to present these concerns to PSC's staff and their attorney, because I don't see trying to raise service to median level to be discriminatory. But I just want to clarify that, hearing the comments presented.
And I would say that while we appreciate that, that is something that we would not be willing to enter into. This is, I mean, it's a no-go for us, and we've discussed that multiple times. So we want to do better, we are trying, we are investing in your community to do better, we are rebuilding most of your system. And so we're hearing you, we understand your concerns, we understand it's painful to be out of power.
Can I get you to look at the Performance and Reliability Memorandum of Understanding? It's in the packet, and I believe it's, what is it, page 65 of 256? And it's a chart that shows basically the subject, the 2018 proposal and the 2017 city position. And so there is a number of things in '17, the city position, that were included. And then looking at what the 2018 proposal has, I see that in the '17 position, dedicating a PSC line crew to Kenmore was included, and in the '18 proposal, it's not included. I was wondering why that got taken out. And then, small business, direct install program. In the 2017 city's position, it was to offer annually to Kenmore businesses, and in the '18 proposal, that's not included. I'm wondering why.
I can address those. The dedicated line crew is probably not practical for Kenmore. That's something that Bainbridge Island was interested in as they were pursuing a new franchise agreement, because being an island that's, you know, more remote, harder to get to, PSC, I think reasonably responded that, you know, they're having a dedicated line crew in one town, you know, doesn't, isn't efficient for the repair or maintenance when you have facilities that are, you know, otherwise close by. So that seemed to be a reasonable response to us, but it was something that was more applicable to a more remote area than where we live. And the direct install program, we're getting information about other programs that PSC would be offering. This one happened to take place, I think, a couple of years ago, and was well-received. Again, when you're, when you're looking for a whole number of things to be included in an agreement, you prioritize.
That's fine. Okay, fine. Anything else? We are just letting staff know what we want. We'll have this back again to take action on. Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, I would like a little more direction. So you heard from PSC just now, what is a no-go for them? Well, if they get to tell you what a no-go is for them, you can tell them what is a no-go for you. Perhaps you, perhaps them not agreeing to bring us to average is a no-go for you. Would like to get your thoughts on that.
Thoughts?
I thought that's exactly what they said was a no-go, is putting numbers like that.
Right. So I, you know, I can see, PSC does not agree to bring Kenmore residents to average. I mean, that's what we heard them say.
Councilmember Curtis?
I think Deborah had her hand raised first.
But then she was pointing down this way, so.
Oh, I was just raising it.
Okay. Councilmember. Councilmember Smith?
Well, and that would be an interesting headline, what you just said. So I think, I mean, if there's a way to, I mean, this is difficult to do this in a public forum like this. It's a negotiation, but if there's a way forward to get a stronger commitment and a stronger understanding of the goal, which is, as you very aptly put the Lake Wobegon model, at or above system average, I would like to see if there's a path forward there. And I would, I would hope that we could maybe explore that. And it looks like there's an interest and willingness to try.
Any else? Councilmember Curtis and Councilmember Smith?
So my inclination is to say, I trust the work of our Assistant City Manager, our City Manager and our lawyer, and the work they've done over the last 18 months, working out an agreement that has never been even done before in this format. And sometimes compromise, if you get 80% of what you want, what you want is a good place to end. And my inclination is to trust our staff, trust our legal representation, and to say, it may not be perfect. It may be not exactly everything we want, but I think it is so far ahead of where we were that I'm inclined to move forward with this agreement, not put extra limitations that we know are going to create conflict, and see what it looks like in a year. I think we have enough protections in this agreement, enough outs, that if we are really unhappy and nothing is improving whatsoever with all the investments that have been put in, then we can have the discussion. But I think to say, we want everything we want, when we've gotten a huge amount, in my opinion, in capital dollars and in new memorandum of agreements, I think we should be happy with this position and give it a chance.
Member Smith?
I believe that if we actually have defined metrics or performance levels, that that actually diminishes conflict, in my mind. I see it just the opposite, that the vagueness allows ambiguity, and then it's, nobody's right or wrong, because nobody has defined what right or wrong is. And so I actually think it, the best way to avoid the conflict, and the irony is, we're not even asking for anything more, that what we're really just asking for is everything they've told us they're going to deliver on. And so we just, we're saying, well, show us, or give us something. So we're not, we're not asking for another dollar in capital improvements, or another line to be moved or anything. It's just, if this is what we're promised, then just promise it. That seems simple.
You know, I certainly understand the restitution part on five days with a major storm. I mean, there can just be hundreds of thousands of people without power. I mean, we've seen it happen, that eight-day storm, I think it was back in 2007, 2008, the one Monday night football, that, the famous windstorm that came through here and took everybody's power out, and it was out for eight or nine days. I understand catastrophes like that. But power outage, just out of the blue, my wife and I were woken up, when was it, Saturday night? Well, actually, early Saturday morning, at about 2:00 in the morning, because we have Alexa that controls our lights. And all, what I found out, when the power goes out and comes back on, all of your lights go on. So we're sound asleep, all of a sudden, my bedroom light goes on. So, and then it goes out again, and it was out for four or five hours, I think. There wasn't, I don't think there was any storms, there certainly wasn't any wind, so. The 24-hour one, I just, I don't understand $50. And frankly, for the week one, I just don't, I don't agree with $50, but I just, I would like to see somehow, something negotiated. And if it's not restitution, then maybe it's ice that can be put in the freezer. Maybe it's the fake ice that can be put in the freezer to maintain a temperature, to keep the food safe for another 24 hours. There seems to be that there's something out there that we can negotiate.
Yeah, we have sandbag stations here in Kenmore. We have dry ice stations.
Anything else? Anybody else?
But am I hearing from most of you for us to go back and push a little harder?
Come for me.
Or bring back the exact language we have next week?
Worth exploring.
Worth exploring? Okay.
That's fine. That's, that's why it's so nice that the state law says you'll discuss franchise agreements not once, but twice.
And actually, you can do it more than twice, but there's a minimum of two times.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
And I guess we're done. Next item on the agenda, ordinance number 18-0456. No. 2018 annual docket for the Planning Commission. Ms. Bent?
Good evening, Council. So this evening, we're here to get direction from you on the 2008 docket. The 2018 docket is the work program for the Planning Commission. That's all we're here to talk about tonight, is the work program for the Planning Commission. So in the municipal code, there's a procedure that talks about what, how docket items are brought forward. We don't need to go into that. But staff has a recommendation for you for several items for Planning Commission consideration, and I'll ask Laurie just to briefly step through what those items are.
Good evening. So there are four items that we are recommending you assign to the Planning Commission for 2018. Three of them would be bundled together in a single package for Planning Commission consideration. But the first item is the continuation of a project that's already in front of the Planning Commission related to the Housing Strategy Plan, looking at preserving existing affordable housing in the mobile home parks. So that's a project we recommend you add to the docket since it's in process, and it would be inefficient to stop it at this point. At the conclusion of that project, we're recommending that you ask the Commission to consider the required, state-mandated, in fact, review of the Shoreline Master Program. And in conjunction with that, we recommend that the city's critical area rules and flood plain rules be addressed. So the last time we went through the Shoreline Master Program, there was a discussion with Ecology about the critical area rules, and we made some tweaks, but we haven't done a comprehensive update. And since these two things are sort of tied together, so many of our critical areas are in shoreline jurisdiction, we're recommending that it all be folded into a single project. There's a June 30, 2019 deadline for us to get our shoreline update in place, so that's why we're recommending starting it in 2018.
Councilmember Marshall?
Do you have any idea of what a general change or the general review in the critical areas ordinance would be, or what sorts of changes are looked at?
We don't at this point. It really would be a comprehensive review, and it would start with Critical Areas Consultant Team, looking at best available science and where there may be gaps in our regulations, doing just that assessment, are there issues that the city should tackle? And then at that point, that would give us the direction to move forward.
Any other questions? All right, so there's no more questions? And I guess, let me see here. Do you want a motion to authorize this docket? Is that what you're looking for?
Yes.
Okay, so the chair will entertain a motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. And then further discussion? Do you want to do the roll, or do you just want to do affirmation?
I think the affirmation's fine, but it's up to you, Mayor.
Yeah, I mean, fine. All those in favor of approving the 2018 docket, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The docket stand is approved unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the Municipal Code Amendments related to school impact fees. Ms. Bent?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to invite Tracy Rogstad and Denise Stifam, representing the North Shore School District, to join us at the table. They will be giving you a presentation about school impact fees. As background to this, the school district have requested the city be able to collect school impact fees. And last year, the Planning Commission gave a recommendation, and council adopted an ordinance to the comprehensive plan that would allow the ability to collect impact fees. So in a sense, to set the table to allow that to happen. So the first point, we thought it would be a good idea to have the school district give a presentation about background on this particular topic, and after that, there's the opportunity to ask questions. And then we are looking for direction from the council, if this is something you want staff to pursue in terms of bringing regulations forward regarding school impact fees. So at this point, I will like to turn it over to North Shore School District.
Thank you. Mayor and council members, thank you for allowing us to come talk to you. I just wanted to throw out there, again, my name is Tracy Rogstad. I'm the Director of Capital Projects for North Shore School District. Denise, one of our attorneys that helps us out with this, has quite a long history and may be assisting me with some of the background, as well as answering some questions. I know that we prepared some answers for questions that has been communicated to us, but in the interest of time, I just want to offer out there that I can answer questions, I can run through the presentation real quickly if you like, or we can just answer questions, kind of leave that up to the council members and the mayor. We're flexible. But if you'd like me to just go ahead and run through the presentation real quick, I can do that as well. Okay. Okay. Just to start off here, this is a little bit, when I was running through, kind of updating this, we're just getting ready to kick off the start of our 2018 capital facilities plan. So the numbers that I'm going to go over here are related to the 2017 capital facilities plan, which was a plan that we put together, began putting together early last year. And so there may be some number changes. I think the city of Kenmore started out with a 2016 plan initially, and so we really have a span of history over three years since the North Shore School District became eligible to collect impact fees. So you may have some questions about the numbers as we go through this. This is just an overview of our district. You can see Kenmore is in the lower west corner. Shows you the dotted lines that divides us pretty much in half between Stonewash County and King County, and the black spots are the different locations of our schools. A lot of growth that you'll see in this, much, much growth in the south end of Stonewash County or the north end of our district. This shows our enrollment trends, projections, and capacity from a period of 2006 to, looking forward to 2026. You can see from 2017 to about 2012, where there's kind of a lull going through the period of time where we were going through a recession. Our numbers, growth numbers began to increase, starting around 2012, 2013, and we've seen a pretty rapid increase in our enrollment in the last six years. And looking forward the next six years, we're going to see that as well. Again, over the last six years, we've increased almost 2,000 students in six years. In the last year alone, we've increased over 700 students. That's the largest growth the district's ever seen in a one-year period. Looking at our capacity deficit, we have to look at each grade span. So elementary school right now is where we're seeing the largest capacity deficit. School impact fee eligibility, we have to have, did I jump ahead too fast? Oh, I got it. Okay, sorry about that. In order for the school district to be eligible to collect fees, there was a number of years, I think, starting in 2002, where we were not eligible because we had capacity in the district. We were talking at that time about closing some schools in the lower southeast portion of our district. And because of capacity in the overall district, we had a lot of, well, we had capacity there, and that caused us to not be eligible to collect impact fees. So we have to have, we have to reach a certain limit in our capacity, or make sure that that deficit is at a specific grade span. We also have to have a construction project to address that growth, or address that deficit in the six-year plan. And the school impact fee formula must generate a fee, so that the fee that is given to you is a formula-driven fee. It's not just a fee that we can, you know, calculate or come up with on our own. This shows development, again, this is 2016 development status, and it's over a period of about, I believe about 17 years. But the different colored boxes you see in the north end, those are sold-out developments, also in the south end, it just kind of shows you how the development has hit us overall as a district. We monitor our birth rates, birth projections in King County and Stonewash County, been monitoring that since back, our records show back to 1996. You can see that the birth rates going, going forward continue to increase. The 2012, we had an average annual birth rate of about 34,000, and that, that year right there would be entering kindergarten this last year. We had one of the largest enrollments in kindergarten that we've had. And moving forward, we anticipate that to continue and increase. One of the things that we do as a district is, before we begin to look at adding new capacity or building schools, or building additions to schools, is we take a look overall at our demographics, our enrollment, our projections as a district. At each grade band, we kind of take a look at, okay, how can we, if we have limited space in a certain area district, or we have limited space in a grade span, say, elementary versus middle school, what we did is we completely reconfigured our schools. So we opened, as you know, New, North Creek High School this last year, and turned that into a four-year high school, or turned all of our high schools into a four-year model, turned our junior highs into a middle school model, so six, seven, eight grade instead of seven, eight, nine, and turned our elementaries into K5 instead of K6. And by moving those grade spans or doing that differently, it opened up space in our elementary schools so that we could accommodate the full-day kindergarten and allowed us, allowed us space in the lower end of the schools. However, the growth that we experienced was still so rapid that we are still, even with opening up that space in full-day K, we're at capacity. And again, going back to growing 700 students in one year, that's almost, that's really two schools. And you, obviously, you know, you can't just build a school in one year. So we did a lot of things internally to try to readjust for that, redrew boundaries, and you may have heard, you know, different families having to adjust to a different school pattern than maybe what they're, what they went through. So we anticipate moving forward with 2017 bond, we're planning in the design process for a new elementary school for 2018 off Maltby Road, and with planning towards adding a middle school to that same property with a following bond, 2022 bond. Constructing a classroom addition of 30 classrooms between the properties of Skyview Middle School and Canyon Creek. That's kind of spanning the two properties, calling that a flexible-use space, so that as the population of our elementary school and our middle schools adjust, we can adjust those classrooms. And so, you know, if you have one year where you have a higher elementary, you may use more classrooms for elementary. So really trying to look creatively of how to add space without having to buy property, because as you know, the property is getting more and more limited, and with a school district or any public agency not being able to pay more than assessed value, we're not really a competitor when it comes to looking for property. Again, just kind of reiterating some of the capacity mitigation efforts that we went through over the last six to 10 years before we looked at building new schools. The legal framework, and I may refer to Denise a little bit about this, but it's governed by- by the Growth Management Act, and it is only charged to new residential development. And in this plan, it is related to single-family homes and townhomes, but we're not collecting a fee, we're not proposing a fee, the formula doesn't drive it yet for multifamily. I just mentioned that I think moving forward with 2018 capital facilities plan, we're starting to see more multifamily development, and I think that has to do with the fact that there's not a lot of land available. And so, developers are finding that building affordable options or, you know, they're using fill spaces and not, not the large available land that, because it's not there. So, we're starting to see a lot of growth in the multifamily. Yep, go ahead.
Just going to touch on that point, I think my microphone is on. The school district did calculate a multifamily fee in their capital facilities plan, so in the same way that they looked at single-family impacts, they looked at multifamily impacts. And what Tracy has touched upon is, for whatever reason, even with the amount of multifamily development that has occurred in the district over the last five to six years, which is a small amount, there just are not many students coming from those units to generate an impact. So, when you run the numbers through the formula, you end up with, and then apply the tax credit and the state construction funding credit, you get to a negative number. And that's largely driven by the fact that the student generation rate is so low. Now, what the district has seen in the most recent updates is that they are starting to see more students coming out of those units, so that number is creeping up. And in a probably near update, there may be, in fact, a multifamily impact fee. But we're, for whatever reason, right now, it's not, just not happening. It's very similar to what is going on in the adjacent district like Washington. They have a very slow number of students coming from multifamily units as well. They have a very small multifamily impact fee, but a high single-family impact fee, again, because most of the students are living in single-family homes.
Again, the, any impact fees that are collected must be expended for new capacity projects, and they must be expended within 10 years of receipt. They have to actually go into a separate interest-bearing account, so we have to track that very, very specifically and carefully. They can only be imposed for system improvements that are reasonably related to new development, and they cannot be used to maintain, you know, maintain schools or use for system deficiencies. So, they're pretty specific about how that, how those monies can be spent. And the fees are calculated, we've talked about that a little bit, based upon a formula adopted by ordinance in each jurisdiction, used by all school districts in that jurisdiction. And the local jurisdiction must assess the fees on behalf of the school district. We have a couple of different situations. I believe, for the most part, we collect them in our district now upon building permit, and then people go back to the jurisdiction with receipt to prove that they've paid us. King County, I believe, collects it for us.
Both, both King County and Stonewash County collect for the district directly at building permit. The City of Bothell and the City of Kenmore, in the existing intra-local agreement, have the district as a collection point. So, that's, it really is up to the jurisdiction in terms of how they want to do that.
Yeah, we are flexible either way. So, that pretty much covers impact fees. The current impact fee formula, it uses a student generation rate, and these are based upon actual students coming from actual houses. We go through, and it's a, you have a snapshot of the last five years to look at, you know, what students, what age, what grade band they're coming from. And we get really into the weeds of those numbers. Single-family residents are treated differently than multifamilies, we've talked about. It includes only new capacity costs. We actually only include instruction, construction costs for new construction. We don't include land acquisition costs in the formula, provide we get credits for any state matching funds and for taxes that a new homeowner pays towards school construction. And that formula, it's required that we actually discount that formula by 50%. So, when you come up with a number that's driven by the formula, that 10,000 that's in here has already been cut in half.
And I'll just touch on the formula that Tracy's referring to. The formula's in the back of the district's capital facilities plan, and that formula originated in King County in 1992, when King County was the first jurisdiction to adopt a school impact fee ordinance. And it was developed with a stakeholder group, development community, school districts, and others got together, devised a formula that everyone agreed, measured a per-unit dwelling impact. And then the 50% discount at the end was frankly just a negotiated tool to get to a consensus, so that once you identify what the per unit, per unit impact is, then you just cut it in half, and that is the, the fee that is proposed in the district's plan. So, the formula itself has been adopted in King County and Stonewash County for this district, and also the City of Bothell has that formula as well. And so, the district has the same formula for all jurisdictions and applies that uniform fee, or recommends that uniform fee.
With the end, so.
Put that back up just to show the.
Any questions? Yeah, oh, sorry. And this, yeah, the 10,573, that is a formula-generated fee for both single-family home and town home. Right now, again, there's no fee generated for multifamily, and just gets you into the details where, if you look down at the bottom, the student generation rate for like K5, for example, we generate about 33 students per 100 homes. Just a little over 10 students for, you know, for middle school age. And you can see the difference on the multifamily where we're just not generating, we're generating, you know, not quite four students out of K5 for multifamily dwelling units. And we, we anticipate those numbers, at least for the multifamily, we anticipate those numbers going up. And we're seeing a little bit less construction on the single-family, but not, I don't, I don't think we're seeing a huge decrease yet. It just seems to be starting to level out as we start to look at the 2018 numbers.
Questions? Deputy Mayor.
So, you spoke a little bit about birth rate, how you track that. Right now, though, this entire region is just growing kind of ridiculous, right, just because of migration and the economy. Do you guys factor that into your formulas also?
Are you talking about, which areas?
Well, just the region is growing about 1,000 people a week or something insane like that, just because of migration. It's not birth rate that's driving a lot of the growth.
Yeah, so the district uses a professional demographer to actually update their enrollment projections every year in their plan. And as a part of that demographer's work, he looks at birth rates certainly, but he also looks at what is in the development pipeline, what is rolling forward through the cohort from year to year. So, that definitely is taken into consideration.
Okay. And I also just want to make sure that you guys are very aware that we have possible 2,000 units, just a quarter mile that way, coming, possibly coming online in a couple years, few years, but.
Yeah, we do a, we, in our work with our demographer, we're constantly, I mean, we're following permits and, on a daily basis. And it seems like every time we come to talk with one of the jurisdictions, there's, someone always knows about something that's kind of in the, you know, maybe not quite in the pipeline. And I've actually been at a couple of our owners, Owners Association, where you find out that developers are starting to look at properties and they're, you know, trying to find their way through, there's one up in Canyon Park, that there's some developers looking at putting 1,800 units up there. And, you know, those aren't quite in the pipeline, but we know 10 years out, that's a very real possibility. I think you're talking about the.
Lake Point.
Lake Point property, yeah. So, we've had conversations, we go down and talk with them to get a better idea of, you know, how far out and is there going to be like low-income housing and that, you know, try to get an idea of what to anticipate with regard to student generation. So, yeah, absolutely, we, it's a full-time job, just on a daily basis, just to monitor the growth and, you know, what different kinds of trends that we're seeing. So, I guess the answer is yes.
Okay, thank you.
I just had a quick follow-on to Nigel's comment that, you know, not all multifamily is created equal, so to speak. I mean, you know, a studio or one-bedroom is very different than, you know, a two- or three-bedroom.
Right.
So, that, there might be some, yeah.
Yeah, I think that, and we're beginning to have those conversations, because we're seeing a lot of townhome and discussions about multifamily that are not one- and two-bedrooms, but they're three, four, and five bedrooms. And so, I think we're going to see some changing in the numbers. And even one of the discussions we had about two weeks ago with our demographers, how to get to that information once they start, because you literally have to go to the property and find out, you know, how many, who's living here, you know, what's selling. Some of that information is easier to get than, than other bits of piece of information. But you're right on that we're starting to see a real adjustment in the number of bedrooms in those single-family. And I think we'll see the student generation jump up.
Councilmember Curtis.
This just has flashbacks to our impact fees for transportation and parks and those kind of things. I love data, so it, your flow makes sense, how you got to this point. I think it's interesting, you know, intuitively, we said all housing is equal, multifamily and single-family, but then when you describe, you say, well, the data shows, we're not quite there yet. So, you're asking for what you already have data for, and I'd say, let's proceed with that, and we'll see what happens over time. So, I love the database that you're working from. And again, it's all a projection, you never really know till you get there.
Right, we actually do monitor our error rate from our projections. And, you know, every once in a while, you'll see kind of a dip or something, and you'll have to kind of go back and take a look, did we miss something? And we, we're having those meetings with our demographer now, just to see, you know, what did we, what did we project for 2017? How far off were we? And we were actually, we under-projected for 2017 by about 300 to 400 students in the whole K12, which in one sense is out of, you know, 22,000 students is not a large error. But at the same time, when you've got to find classrooms for 300 to 400 students that you didn't, didn't plan on, then it's a, a big conversation.
Councilmember Smith and Councilmember Marshall.
Well, thanks for the presentation and for sitting through what was probably a really stimulating franchise agreement.
We lost, we lost power at one of our schools.
Oh, did you?
So, I did.
So, you understand.
I did understand.
This is Kenmore High School, right?
No, actually, it was, it was Kenmore. With no, no reason, we were all like, what happened? There was some storm outside, so I do understand that.
We'll be changing our motto soon. But I have a question on the townhome. So, is a townhome, because there are condo townhomes, and then there are townhomes. And so, you could have, for instance, six townhomes right next to each other that look identical, and some might be developed where they own the land underneath, and others may be, be developed as a condominium. Does it differentiate? Because it said townhome, and I thought, well, is that, what if, because there are condo projects, that's, that's all they have are townhomes. And I was just wondering, how, how do you guys know the difference?
Good question. I'm going to give you a little bit from my perspective of what we've been dealing with and where we're going. Denise might have a little bit to add, but the townhome is defined pretty clearly in the Stonewash County code. And I believe there are codes, I don't know, of King County jurisdictions that define that, and, you know, it has to do with shared walls and how many next to each other. And I, I believe as I've been kind of looking at this, you know, condo of two to four bedrooms versus one to three bedrooms, we're going to have to figure out a way to try to extract that data more specifically than we have in the past. But I don't have an answer yet on how we're going to define, you know, condo slash townhome, because, I mean, I, I've even seen single-family homes that are defined as condos.
They're developed as condos, and they're detached and everything.
But they're detached, right? So, I think we're seeing the development community be really creative.
That's exactly where I was going, is that.
So, it's a little bit of, we're having to look back and learn some lessons, because obviously, if, if things are defined differently, then developers don't have to pay fees because we didn't define it that way. So, we're having to kind of live and breathe the current situation and look forward, because we're seeing development that is, it's different than what we saw 20 years ago.
No, that's, I appreciate that, because that's actually all I was trying to, make sure that you were aware of all this. Because there's a lot of easy nuance that could easily probably avoid the, the impact fee.
Right.
Depending on which route, which route you want to take your development.
Right. And part of the district's challenge is the district is in five jurisdictions, and so they need to look to all of the different codes to determine, how does this jurisdiction define, or does this jurisdiction define a townhome as single-family or as multifamily? And how does that fit with the impact fee ordinance? And so, and I think, given the way that land is shrinking in terms of available new development, developers are getting more creative with what is a townhome. And so, as Tracy mentioned, it's something that the district is tracking, because while some jurisdictions define those as multifamily units, they are generating students more like a single-family home.
And it has also, you know, do with what's affordable. And so, they're finding methods to try to, you know, use construction a little bit differently, but keep the prices high enough to where there's a profit margin, but yet attract the younger, you know, dual-income, maybe they don't have kids yet. And, and I've gotten those answers a lot from, you know, master builders saying, well, you know, it's, these won't attract people with kids. Well, they tend to buy and then have kids within a few years. So, we have to kind of monitor, you know, what may have used to attract, you know, like a one- or two-bedroom condo might now be a three- or four-bedroom townhome, maybe called a condo, that within a few years, then the birth rate starts to affect. And so, then we have to start to track that into, you know, five years out from when they start having kids.
Councilmember Marshall.
So, the 50% discount is not spring from law or whack or anything like that? It was negotiated and then with the stakeholders, like the development community at the fore?
Correct.
Any other questions? Okay, so the issue is before us, do we want staff to move forward or not with the code change necessary to implement this? So, is there general agreement? Let's have staff go ahead and bring it back with the necessary amendments needed for the municipal code. And I'm seeing a vast majority nodding their heads yes.
Also, as part of this will need to be a new inter-local agreement as well. So, that's another kind of component of this, separate but related.
Right. In other words, go forth and.
Go forth and.
Do what's needed so you can come back to us.
Work with the school district, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, City Manager, staff report, please.
Yeah, John, do you want to come up? All right, well, John's coming up. John Vicente and Kent Vaughn have been working on advancing some of our sidewalk projects, including TIB grant-funded 181st sidewalks between 65th and 67th, and then also walkways and waterways. He'd like to show you the latest concept for the 181st sidewalk, and also get some direction from you as well on the north end of the 68th Avenue sidewalk project, in particular on 68th Avenue. You may recall, last time we gave you an update a couple of months ago, we were struggling with the fact that the funds weren't giving us the full meal deal for the whole corridor. And because of a stream constraint there up north, at the north end, we were looking at going to sharrows instead of bike lanes. But then we said, you know, let's, let's try to do bike lanes. And so, Kent and John, I think, have created a, or found a pretty creative way to squeeze in some bike lanes. It's going to cost more money, but it's still a pretty cost-effective way of squeezing in those bike lanes. So, John, do you want to take it from here?
Sure. Of course, it's going to cost more money. Never easy. The 68th sidewalk, what we found we could do is, currently, there is an existing sidewalk that runs along, we'll call it the east side of the road, up there where 202nd turns into 62nd to 61st. And there's the existing sidewalk, if we remove that, move that up against the wall, then we can bring the lanes over, provide bike lanes on both sides of the road, still maintain a sidewalk. But that would require us to do a cantilevered sidewalk from where the wall ends to, I can't remember what that street is that comes up.
62nd.
62nd. And that would, because right there, there's, the creek runs along the east side of 202nd, 62nd right there, and then it crosses. side of 202nd, 62nd right there. And then it crosses about where that wall is under the street. And so we have to deal with that water course. And so the best way to do with that is for us to cantilever over it. If we were to get in there, then we affect the culvert, which means then we'd have to replace it, much like we did on 192nd. Another million dollars later, we're replacing a culvert and adding a sidewalk. So we found that for about an extra approximate million dollars, we can bring the bike lanes in to both sides of the street through that area.
So, John, you mentioned cantilever. Perhaps another way of describing it is kind of like a boardwalk?
Yes, like a boardwalk. So we would install a, one or two pin piles on one end and another set on the other end. And we would brace the sidewalk that way. It would hang over and there'd be a railing on the side. So we have several different ways that we can design that. But right now, it would just be supported on the west side and then hang over to the east, over the creek itself. So, any questions on 68?
Yeah, Councilmember Curtis.
So, you know, just a million here and just a million there. Our goal is to get all the walkways, waterways projects done. And a lot of them are coming in over budget. I would rather spend the million a different way than this way. And a couple of thoughts I had. One is to ask the citizens, is it really so important to you that you have separate bike lanes all the way up because we kind of promised it to you? Or would sharrows really be okay? To save a million dollars, what do you really, what's okay? So to get some citizen input before we spend a million dollars that in my mind is not a million dollars well spent. Another thought is most of the bike traffic that comes down Locust Way has the option of going past Lockwood School, past the junior high, and coming into 202nd a little farther down. So if you just, you know, like those, you know, truck bypass routes? So if you just put up a sign right there at that, that Y, you can go down 60, well, Locust Way and 61st, or you could go over to Lockwood, just put a sign, say, the best way is go this way. Then they would come into a place where we've already got bike lanes. So again, I just don't think this million is worth spending in this way. So the minimum, we should ask our citizens before we go this direction, in my opinion.
And we are having open house this Thursday on the project. And that is a question that we can bring up with the folks who do attend and kind of get their feedback. Though there's no guarantee how many people will show up and attend. So that is one avenue we can utilize.
Councilmember Duski.
So I kind of have the opposite opinion. So thank you for being creative and thank you for coming up with this option. I support it. I think it's important to do walkways and waterways well and to give the citizens what they wanted and what we said we were going to do. It's also, you know, one of the tighter, curvier areas of the road. And it didn't make sense to me to have the bike lane not be where you'd really want a bike lane for safety. So I support this and I like it. Thanks.
Yeah, I couldn't figure out where this was at. But I found it. It's, it's not readily obvious where 62nd and 67th way are.
Think of it as the, other than the 202nd project is completed, it's the only area that has sidewalk currently.
Wonderful.
Your Honor, this, so this, just one thought on the financial part is, and that is, this is assuming we can find the million. And, and I checked with Joanne today and we do have, after, after kind of a brief dip, we have a strong real estate excise tax funds coming in, starting at about 2020. And then our transportation impact fee fund, which can also help with this, is well in excess of a million dollar fund balance for the foreseeable future. So there, we can access those funds for this. But again, the only caveat is assuming that this Mammoth River Bridge comes in on budget and, and the Wanita sidewalks come in on budget and we get grant funding for those. And so it's still kind of a moving target. And as we get a little bit further into this year, we'll update our CIP and propose a more solid strategy.
I would like to add that with that estimate that we have for 68th, we are taking into account a very tough bid season, high bids, high costs, that sort of thing. So we do have that included in our estimate. And we're also going to be looking at playing for a couple of grants for that portion of the project as well, too. So hopefully, if we win something there, that will help offset some of the cost.
Yeah, in fact, of, of the project cost, two and a half million is contingency.
Are you anticipating from 61st Street all the way down 67th, I mean, down 202nd and all the way to the turnoff there by Kenmore Mill School, bike lanes all the way down?
We're looking at bike lanes for the entire length, all the way down to 185th.
And the idea is that, starting at 185th, it would, we'd have on-street parking and it would be, it would be like we have right now in front of Spencer 68.
So then that little bit there from 62nd away where it cuts off, it's actually continued all the way to 61st, right?
Yeah. Yes, yes, we do have the right of way to take it all the way to 61st.
But not on this project?
No, this project would take it all the way to 61st. We were just, when we presented previously, we indicated that that particular section around that curve, we couldn't fit in the bike lanes without having a significant impact.
I don't see the bike lanes included, you know, because it goes off the page. That's why I'm curious. Okay. Councilmember Shobnik?
Just a, a quick support of your work and your creativity. And I, you know, I think we've learned from other projects that the citizens don't really prefer half measures. So this is, this is great. I think we kind of promised, you know, edge to edge walkways and bike lanes. And that was kind of the selling point. And so I'm glad we have a path forward. And of course, unfortunately, it is going to cost more. But at least we have a path.
So, Councilmember Marshall.
Did outreach for the open house include mailings to the neighborhood?
So we sent mailer to every resident in Kenmore regarding the open house. We also did social media, the website. We've got some flyers out in the lobby. And I believe that's how, yeah.
So, in the grand scheme of things, millions not much. But if we continue to rob a million from what we've got set aside, you know, we've got the, the bridge that's constantly climbing. We've got a lot of projects we're doing and there's not going to be a bank account to tap after a while. So I'm, I'm concerned too. But yeah, if we say we're going to do something, we've got to, got to finish it and deliver it.
And we're still very early on in our design and our estimating. So that number could go down, could go up. But it's still, we're, we're hopefully taking into account the possibility of it going up with the estimate that we have. So.
All right, questions? Councilmember Curtis?
I guess my just last comment would be that we need to take this project in balance with all the other walkways and waterways projects. And if it's 50%, you know, instead of 20 million, it's 30 million, then we need to make a decision. Is this one of the millions we want to spend? So we need to focus not just on this one curve, we need to look at the whole meal deal and make sure we give the citizens as much as we can, even if it doesn't include this curve.
All right, information only, right?
Yes, correct.
Any other questions? Thank you.
So the northeast 181st Street sidewalks, this is sidewalk over here in downtown, 65th to 67th, on the north side of the street, where we currently have insufficient or no sidewalk whatsoever. We did apply for a TIB grant and got some funding to do that work. And we originally had proposed doing an amenities strip for planting and a sidewalk. But after further looking at our, our right of way, after we did our survey, we found that we could add on-street parking. So we did a quick analysis as to what it would take to put in on-street parking. And based off of the numbers, the calculations, we found that for about an extra $50,000 or more, we can provide on-street parking on the south and the north side of the street and still build within the existing right of way. And so we are, put this together to present this option versus our original option, which was just to put sidewalk in the planting strip in.
So, quick question to the parking. Is that going to be parallel or is that going to be diagonal?
It would be parallel parking. We've, we've got a space roughly, almost the entire length on the north side, with the exception of where we've got some driveway connections. And then we've got parking in front of the library on the other side.
Yeah, my only thought is if it were diagonal, because of what we're planning with the restaurant opening and other development going on in that whole complex, get more cars diagonally than you can parallel.
One of the complications that we have is with the diagonal, will require possibly a little bit more space. And what that does, that then starts to impact the coffee shack. Because currently, their turnaround is using part of the right of way. And we would have to take that space from them. And we're trying not to have a too detrimental impact on the businesses.
Right, but we're hope growing this whole area, so.
Yeah, yeah. And we can, we can look at the option of putting in a parallel parking along there. I haven't done the actual.
Do you mean angled?
I'm sorry, angled parking. Sorry. We can look at that option.
So, so I hope you, I hope this wasn't lost on you, but new parking in front of the library, which is a big deal. But if we did, if we did angled parking, I guess you could, then you'd lose that parallel parking in front of the library. And so it may not be.
We'd still have to look at the numbers because currently, we're only shifting the lane a couple of feet to the north because the sidewalk is intended a little bit towards the library. So there is extra pavement there that we wouldn't be able to use otherwise. And so there's a possibility. But again, I'd have to do the actual math, cross-section, look at our impacts and see if it's possible to put in the angled parking without having to acquire right of way.
I'm just looking with the parking problems that we are finding out, that do anything to add some numbers. I think it's a good thing. So, Deputy Mayor.
So you talk about large tree removal in the memo. And I'm trying to kind of identify. So you said one of the trees was in decent health, two of them were in declining health. How much time was spent looking at trying to save the tree that is in decent health? Because it sounds like a fairly large tree. And I'm trying to look at Google Street View right now. And if it's one I'm looking at, it's a pretty significant tree.
It's the large tree right there on the edge of the sidewalk, yes.
That's, that's a very significant piece of biomass right there.
Yes, there is the possib, we had an arborist come out and take a look and they did say the trees were healthy and that there was a possibility that we could build sidewalk in front, pretty much where it is right now. But it would be a very narrow piece of sidewalk, kind of like what it is today, like four, maybe five feet at best. But there's a possibility we could look into its survivability. We couldn't bring the sidewalk around to the other side because then we get into ADA issues, which would then compromise the, the road structure of the tree.
Plus, you'd lose the, a little bit of parking, right?
You'd lose some parking and we'd have to look to see how it impacts the driveways getting around.
No, and I appreciate all that. I just, I mean, that is a massive tree right there. And if it's in good health and we think it's going to be around for a few more decades, I'd like to really look at ways that we can keep it. I mean, we complain when developers come in and just clear cut to make it easier. And, and yeah, it's probably much easier for us to just take out the large trees and put in the street trees. But it's going to take decades for the street trees to provide the same sort of benefits that that tree is providing right now. And if the other two are in bad health and need to go, that's, I totally understand that. But if there's a way that we can look at preserving that tree, I'd be really interested in, in looking at that closer.
Yeah, we can definitely look into that.
Thanks.
One, one thing to point out is if you look at the building where, I call it where Teriyaki is, you can see right now that they're already using parking that's half in the right of way, half not in the right of way. They have it signed exclusively for them, even though a bunch of the parking is in the right of way. But as you can see, that will be lost. I guess you could, you were telling me you could fit one car in there?
Might be able to fit in a car parallel to the sidewalk in that space.
For the building, yeah.
Possibly, yeah.
So that's the bad news. The good news is we'll be gaining a bunch of on-street parking. And so I think your memo said that the net increase in number of spaces in that immediate vicinity is how many? What did the memo say?
I don't.
Is it 15? I think it was 15, yeah. So even though we're losing one, two, three, four, and an ADA stall, we're gaining a net of 15. So I can guarantee you, the property owner is not going to be happy about that.
They, they've already expressed concern about that, to me.
And this is just a early preliminary check-in with you. We're going to be reaching out to property owners, tenants, stakeholders, and getting their thoughts on this concept. So we're not asking for any final direction from you tonight because we still have a lot of community outreach to do.
All right. Any more questions? All right, hearing none. Councilmember Reports, Comments, and Initiatives. I won't do this to the new people, so let's start with Stacy.
Nothing for me.
Deborah.
Sure, I just have a couple of shout outs. One is to Brett Schock. Just want to thank him for addressing a very long list of pedestrian, bike, and traffic safety and calming issues that I, that citizens brought up to me as I was canvassing over the summer and fall. And he addressed or explained why they couldn't or shouldn't be addressed for every single one. And that was very, very impressive. And also another shout out to staff, I have two of those this week, to Rob and a variety of other staff that were, hosted a meeting of Arrowhead area residents that were having some difficulties with a problem in their area. And really, it showed how they are bending over backwards to try to address the citizens' issues. So it's just a lot of appreciation for those efforts.
Councilmember Curtis?
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Marshall?
Just wanted to express appreciation to City Manager and staff if it's perhaps the same issue that Deborah was referring to on a house in which there was a guardianship estate involved with the recent eviction proceedings. I understand that's been resolved. And the city, I was impressed with the way the city gave an informational bulletin, I think, on the city website and made it clear for the citizens.
Member Smith?
Yeah, I wanted to say that I, I think we might have some city managers in surrounding cities that will be upset at ours. Because during the State of the City address, he made them all look really bad by how dynamic he is. And so he, he gave a very fantastic, I guess, performance, for lack of a better word. And, and it was a great, as good as his other ones were, I think even outdid himself this last week in the State of the City. So, well done, Rob.
Deputy Mayor?
Nothing to add.
So there's a couple of things that I've got. One is, there is an opening on the, and there's a call for nominations for the Joint Recommendations Committee. It's a county committee that distributes CDBG block grants that help, that decides to fund certain affordable housing projects. It's a really good committee. I served on it once. I applied to serve it on it again. But because of my commitments to the PSRC Executive Committee, I can't serve. So I am giving up the position. And there is a call for nominations out. I was a North person. We want a North person in there. So if anybody's interested in it and it is available. And I think it meets monthly and I think it's Thursday mornings. But anyway, so, and then also, a question. The, the lady from Wild Cliff Shores that has been missing for a number of days, is there any? is there any news of her?
No, the one that was...
The, the little lady from Wild Cliff Shores.
I haven't heard anything about whether they found her. Did you all get a call last night, an automated call? I did.
No.
Like kind of an Amber Alert type call? Yeah, it came on my phone, my home phone.
I don't have a home phone, maybe that's why.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we did, too. Okay, so there's some other things going on here. I had a meeting last week with Mayor Durkin. And it's pretty refreshing to have a new mayor back in there. You know, Mike McGinn always worked with, with these, the, the cities in the county. He, you know, people said that he wasn't a good mayor, but boy, he always worked with the cities. He was very helpful to us. With the mayor that, that left a few months ago, I think two mayors ago, three mayors ago, he just was in his own world and could care less about the cities. We've had complaints in the emails from people about traffic on 14, on 522. We know that 145th is the choke point, we know that Seattle's going to do nothing about it. Mayor Durkin wants to talk to us about that. And we're looking at possibly moving the bus stop down further in a little indent. Or perhaps making a new indent that the bus could pull into so that we could have two lanes of traffic. So I took the opening to talk to her about it, and she was, didn't say no. And it turns out that, that she is new appointee to the Sound Transit Board also. So I'll have a number of opportunities to, to bend her ear. So that one was pretty exciting, to see the possibilities. I mean, I, I think Juarez, Deborah Juarez, some council member that has that area. I've tried for three years to get an appointment with her and talk to her. She won't meet me, she won't meet with Shoreline people, and it's just a lost cause. So it's really nice to get the mayor to talk to us. I was at the State of the Port meeting, and the topic was, how can we work together to create a sustainable future of opportunity, equity, and prosperity for all? The panelists included Deanna Burkett-Rakau, a VP of External Relations with Alaska Airlines, and Bill Taylor, owner of Taylor Shellfish Farms, and a number of others. So it was a really good talk, and, and looks like Sound Transit is going to continue, you know, with, with the handouts and whatever they're giving to the states, the grants they're giving to the cities, to, to continue to promote small business and that. So that is pretty encouraging. I mean, the port of Seattle. So, and I had a Sound Transit briefing today. Peter Rogoff was here. And then we have asked Sound Transit if they would come and talk to the council about some of the plans. And so they're going to send somebody that will do that at a, at a future meeting. So we get a little bit of understanding. It's good because we're, we're coming up with some decisions on Kenmore here, and pretty quick. So it's good that I've got that. The last thing is, I've been getting an email from a gentleman, can't remember his name now, but he is appalled that we haven't banned plastic bags in the city. I just wanted to bring that up. My concern is some of the restaurants and that, that might get affected, the smaller businesses. We only have the one grocery store in town. So I don't know, but anyway, I'm bringing it up. So I don't think Bothell has banned. I know Kirkland has. Lake Forest Park hasn't, Shoreline has. That's my understanding. So anyway, that's the situation. And unless there's new business to come before us, we're done.